The appointment of a construction management firm and collective negotiations of the CSEA.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. We should only be...
Thirty minutes.
Do we see Ms. Felcaro here someplace? Hi. So, what is not on the memorandum is that we would like to congratulate our girls softball team and their coach, Marissa Felcaro, for their most recent state championship. And then, along with that, we would like to introduce one of the parents of our players, but most importantly, the man who is responsible for them not having to ride all the way to Glens Falls on a school bus. And so, Ms. Felcaro, would you mind coming up? And the girls can come too. And if you don't mind showing off your jackets and your medals while you're doing that, that'd be great, too.
This is my whole team. Some of them had a leave to go study, and I'm gonna try to make it quick so the rest of them can go study. And then, others had a softball game. But, just a little history on our softball team. Last year, we went pretty far. We went to a crossover game, and we lost it 1-0. So, we had a couple of goals this year, and we had some different ones. But, the major goal was that we wanted to get 1% better every day and see how bad that could take us. We ended up going 12-0 in division, earning our first division title since 2011. And then, throughout playoffs, we pretty much went untouched, demolishing teams left and right, until our Class B final with the pew where we won 2-1. We moved down to the regionals versus Waylon Cohocton, who were the champions from Rochester, and ended up demolishing them 14-0, earning Eden's first-ever regional title, where we got to travel to Glens Falls last weekend for the New York State Championship. We were one of four teams from all of New York State who were competing for this. And just to sum it up a little bit for you, like, our Class B in Erie County has 28 teams, so there's 11 sections in New York. Most sections have between 20 and 28 schools. So, we were one of the four remaining schools left. In the first game, we beat Center Mariachis from Long Island 4-3 in the bottom-of-seven inning on a bunt, which had many people talking, including a lot of college scouts. In the championship, we played Solvay from Syracuse and beat them 1-0 in extra innings. And here we are, New York State Champions for the 2014 season. We would definitely like to thank Mr. Kraska for us to travel and charter us instead of the school bus, which was very comfy. To the high school staff and students for the amazing setup on Friday morning, which Mr. Savoni organized. To Mr. Graff, Ms. McKenna, Mrs. Harris, Mrs. Felton, Charlie Humm, for attending states this week, this past weekend. To Mr. Campbell, Mr. Burns, Mr. Shepherd, the Eden Police, the Fire Department, the Hamburg Police, Mrs. Welham, Mrs. Ramikers, and Mrs. Porter, for the amazing welcome home and bonfire that we had Sunday morning. It was truly amazing.
Twelve forty in the morning, twelve quarter to one in the morning. Yes, and everybody in the Weller Division knew.
Everybody, anybody from the toll booth in Hamburg, all of them, with a lot of honking, knew. Yes. But, actually, we would just like to thank the entire Eden community for, without their support, none of this would be impossible.
So, if Mr. Kraska, if you wouldn't mind coming forward with the team, because you've been such an integral part of this, all the... So, I'm sure Marissa said it, but she said it really quickly. It's not just the bus to Glens Falls, because there was a spectator bus to Niagara Weedfield as well, too, right? Two, too, so that our kids could go and cheer on. You are an amazing dad and an amazing coach yourself, and the district honestly is indebted to how much you care about our kids and care about our school district. And I'm really glad that you missed your golf game tonight to come to our board meeting, so I can tell you that. I'm glad you missed your golf game tonight, so I can tell you that.
It wasn't easy.
I know. I know. Absolutely. And you might want to talk about that pitch on the 26th. Or is that a secret?
Oh, yeah. It's something cool. I got my backpack everywhere, which is really cool. Hey, how's it going? You know, what's amazing is that, you know, I talked to... Is that my phone?
She knows.
I talked to my sister-in-law, Cheryl, at the bonfire. And if anybody knows Cheryl, she coached for 30 years at East Door High School. And in that 30-year span, she's brought back, oh, probably good five or six state champions, individuals and teams. And she said at the bonfire, she says, "They've never done anything like this." Hats off.
Thank you.
Mr. Burns. Mr. Campbell. Sandy for being there. Coach for winning.
Paul.
The team. Mr. Shepherd. Everybody that did everything to make these kids feel warm and cozy, that it meant something, was very, very important to this organization. So, what we have going on on June 26th. Okay. Contact to the Visins. It's a 1 o'clock game, so those are the girl graduation. Jen, don't worry about it, okay? Abby, don't worry about it. Basically, what you guys are gonna do is you're gonna get there at 1:05, I guess the log is thrown out. You guys are gonna, you guys right now are gonna be on the field, and somebody's gonna throw out the first pitch at the Visins game, which will be pretty cool. We can't have Felcaro do it, because I've seen her throw. More than likely, try to have Sabrina catch him. Maybe Jill can throw out the first pitch on her hand, and more than likely, it'll be reached. But, thank you, guys. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody get, did everybody get a chance to see the jackets? They just happened to be the right colors.
It was fate.
It was fate that we win, that's right. Thank you, guys, for coming. I appreciate it. Mr. Kraska, thank you again.
Can I leave?
No.
No.
Barb, you're up.
You're freezing it.
Oh.
Best of the...
Number three. Request to withdraw specific items from consensus items.
I have nothing.
A through what?
A through...
A through N.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. All right.
We're down to new business?
Nope. Two minutes. Anyone who would like to speak has two minutes.
General questions?
It's not really a question-answer. It's more of...
Presentation or statements.
Well, how do I present questions?
This would be a good time, but we just might not be able to answer them today, but we'll take them down, sure.
Sure, if you can come up to the podium, state your name.
I am Don Loretto, resident town. I have some questions about the minutes from February of this year.
How do you spell your last name?
Specifically, Mr. Murphy's business report. It was well laid out, pretty concise, but I have questions on the categories that are veterans that assessors supplied, because there's only one category of veteran that is able to take advantage of the exemption from school tax. So, I was curious as to, do these figures represent two things? The equalized value, and is it just the category that are able to get the school tax exemption?
And I can actually answer that question, if you'd like me to. As I discussed with you over the phone, at the time in February when I was looking, I used the information that I was given from each of the town assessors. There was one town in particular who gave me more exemptions that actually were able to have the exemptions. On July 2nd, we are actually gonna have a presentation. Erie County will be here with us as well. We will have the figures for you. So, you are gonna hear the full amounts actually on July 2nd with just the exempt amount, period. So...
So, does this represent that amount?
No, it does not. And I, and it's a good question you asked. I know I told you on the phone, but not everyone here had a chance to hear it, so I'm glad it's a clarification. The figure that was given in February was artificially high due to one town.
Exactly.
So, absolutely.
And the value is an equalization value, $19 per thousand?
It's with the equalization rate, correct. You're welcome.
So, do you want to just state now the time for July 2nd?
The time, I believe our start time was 5:30? 5:30 or 5:45?
5:40 to 6:30.
So, there you go. So, 5:40 to 6:30. We already have confirmed Erie County Division of Tax will be here for the presentation. They are looking at our numbers specifically, so that will address that as well. Okay?
Go for it.
Will that be available before the meeting?
The presentation? Sure.
The figures?
Yeah, we can put that up.
The figures.
The numbers. I gotta look at what their presentation is, and, yeah, we can have that available for you ahead of time on our website, so everyone can print it out.
So, we'll put it right on the front page of the website, and it'll link over to something, right?
Not in the front, but in the front page.
It'll always go on the front page and then link somewhere.
But watch out...
If you can't find it, call us.
Yeah, watch out, because sometimes they're just links. You may not see them, so definitely, it'll be on the front page, a link.
Anyone else? Nope. Going once. Go on.
New business.
Resignations. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of teacher on special assignment, Kelly Morgan LaRosa, be accepted effective June 30th, 2014. And there's a note that Ms. LaRosa is resigning from her teaching position in order to accept the Director of Curriculum and Instruction and Staff Development position.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Appointments. All appointments will not be, will not be effective in service to the district pursuant thereto, shall not begin until there has been compliance with statutory and regulatory provisions for fingerprinting, certification, and clearance for employment. And the recommended motions, we have, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Ashley Mason, who is professionally certified in childhood education, 1 through 6, be appointed on probation as an elementary teacher effective September 1st, 2014 through August 31st, 2016. Salary is based upon ETA contract, Masters Step 2.
Second.
Discussion.
I would just like to note that Ashley has worked for us as a long-term sub, filling in for Kelly LaRosa, who was a TOSA for the director position, and has done an amazing job. And so, the law allows us, in cases like this, where the position is exactly the same and has been a long-term sub, full-time position, to grant a two-year tenure instead of a three. And that's why you see this August 31st, 2016, which is two years and not 17. So, part of this motion is to grant a two-year tenure and not a three, as well as to bring her on as a probationary teacher.
Will you explain that again?
A teacher who has never had tenure before, works for a school district for three years as a probationary teacher. When they have held a position in a district that is exactly as a long-term sub, which she did this current year, and is going on to do the exact same job the second year, the law allows us to grant her one year that she's already applied to the district as part of that three-year probationary. So, I am asking that we use that, that the law allows us, and only do two more for probationary to tenure.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
And she's here?
Is she here? We're assessing. Will you stand up, so we could see you?
Congratulations.
Great job. We're thrilled to have you here. Thank you. And you don't need to sit here for the whole meeting. Okay?
Appoint extended leave substitute teacher. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Sheila Sikow be appointed as an extended leave substitute special education teacher, replacing Katie Musso, effective approximately September 2nd, 2014, through November 28th, 2014, or upon the return of Mrs. Musso. Salary is $95 per day.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Appoint summer school positions. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following personnel are appointed to summer school positions, effective July 7th, 2014, through August 15th, 2014. Sheila Sikow, teacher aide, 3.5 hours daily for three weeks. Elaine Funch, teacher aide, 3.5 hours daily for three weeks. Darlene Smith, school nurse, 3.5 hours daily for three weeks. Holly Gable, school nurse, 3.5 hours daily for three weeks. Carol Stumpf, substitute teacher.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Appoint summer transportation personnel. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following personnel be appointed for the summer transportation positions, effective July 7th, 2014, through August 15th, 2014. And they're on the board.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Appoint summer computer AV cleaner. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Susan Roseman be appointed as a summer computer AV cleaner, effective July 1st, 2014, until completion.
Second.
Discussion.
How, how long does it usually take? Like, is it a month, or does it go into September or November?
Lucinda, can you clarify for me?
This is Mrs. Roseman's fourth year with us, and we've now gotten so big, especially with a short summer like this, the reason we do is completion, sometimes she does go into the first couple of weeks of September.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Appoint school counselor intern, Eden Elementary. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Lisa Wickman be appointed as a school counselor intern, effective September 1st, 2014, and ending June 30th, 2015.
Second.
This is an unpaid position. Is she getting this through school? Is this like a...
She's here. She can tell us if you'd like. Lisa, would you stand up and just tell us a little about yourself?
I'm Lisa Wickman. I, hello, my first one for my school counseling degree. I just did my nine-month internship. So, I'd be very blessed, I could be a part of the Eden School District.
Now, this is, you already did an internship, and now you're gonna do another one?
No, this is...
This is it. This is it. Counselors have a nine-month internship. Student teachers don't have that long, so this would be about three days a week for most of the school year. Lisa's asked if she could start the school year with us. Of course, we would say, sure, come in every day, right? And she would also be in some of the other buildings as well, just getting a general idea of what happens K-12. Lisa Clem is very highly recommended. I thank Mr. Graff for working on this a lot, and we appreciate you being here. I know that you were here this morning at 7:00, and I'm sorry about that.
You gotta give us the whole education.
The PM, not the AM part. So, thank you for coming twice, Eden.
No problem.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Congratulations. Thank you. You also don't have to stay for the whole meeting. Okay.
Approve appointment of a construction management group incorporated...
Do the name?
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Campus Construction Management Group be appointed to approve, provide construction management services for the Eden School District 2020 capital project.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify the 2020. It's not starting 2020. We're not gonna start in 2020. That's what we're naming the project.
That's correct. That's correct. For the big ribbon cutting, because Barbara Tomsoa has these giant scissors, right?
Can't wait to use them.
Oh, they're giant.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
And Tom Caruso and John Teagle are here. If you could stand up, we'd like to thank you. Congratulations. Is there anything brief that you'd like to say?
We're just looking forward to working with the district. This is gonna be a big project, and it's gonna go for a while. It may be a few years, but we're looking forward to the relationship.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. You also don't have to stay for the whole meeting. Before long, you're all gonna be gone, aren't you?
Approve increase in hours. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, increase of hours of .17 FTE for music teacher Kathy Jeffers, from .43 to 6.60 FTE be approved, effective September 1st, 2014.
Second.
Discussion.
The only thing I'd like to say on this one is that Kathy Jeffers is primarily a GLP teacher, and this year, we had Mr. Vona going down to fill in for a class one day a week at GLP. So, what he will be doing this year is staying more at the elementary school, because we have some of our students moving up there that will need him, which would require us to have more time at GLP. And Mrs. Jeffers is there already.
Upon the recommendation...
We didn't, we didn't do it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, an increase in hours of .34 for physical education teacher, Amy Francisco, from .47 to .81 FTE be approved, effective September 1st, 2014.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, an increase in hours of .04 for library media specialist, Sandy Plots, from .70 to .74 FTE be approved, effective September 1st, 2014.
Second.
Discussion.
I would just like to thank the board for putting this on as a budget item and up for approval. This was one of the pieces that the parents and the students at the elementary school really, really asked for. This would put a librarian at the elementary school for close to four days a week, whereas right now, Mr., I think Mr. Graff left with some with Lisa, but I think right now, she's there for two, maybe just a little bit of three.
She's not even there, two days.
Not even two? Okay, not even two at the elementary school?
Three-quarter days.
Two, three-quarter days?
Tuesdays and Fridays, not even for a full...
Not for a full day? Thank you for clarifying that.
Then, how much is she gonna be...
So, then, what would that point?
A .8 would be a solid four days, so she's just under four days in terms of time. She could be there four days or five days, but a .74 in terms of hours.
Okay.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, an increase in hours of 15 hours for summer school adaptive physical education teacher, Marissa Felcaro, be approved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the CSEA contract, effective July 1st, 2013, through June 30th, 2018, be approved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
I'd like to say thank you to Sandy and Amy for negotiating, and Tom.
And Tom.
It sounds like you put a lot of time and thought into it.
A year. Yep. Thank you, Barb.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
And, and I think the contract is good for the school district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where are we? H... Upon the recommendation of the audit committee, the risk assessment update from... Help me with this word.
Baggett?
Baggett.
Loretto.
Loretto, Baggett, be accepted as presented.
Second.
Discussion.
Well, I was part of the audit committee that reviewed this on time. I had to get that on time there.
He was the first one here tonight, too.
But, yeah, after Wilson Scott, you're the only one here left, and Barbara, then the audit committee. Basically, it came through that the two items that we had were cleared from previous audit, and we were looking at auditing the COGEN as the next audit point for them.
And what was the wording that she wanted you to read for?
It is the, it comes out of the accounts payable section of the audit. It's, the COGEN falls under that audit perspective, which is a critical area to audit.
And it's gotta be in the board minutes, which is why he's had it.
Yes.
Congratulations on moving first or on time.
Yeah, well, you know, first for everything.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, due to economic reasons, the Board of Education hereby abolishes the position of .4 FTE, Teaching Assistant, effective June 30th, 2014.
Second.
Discussion.
Is it a specific person or just time?
That will come later. This just abolishes the position first, and then the person follows in a later motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Approve accessing of employees. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following employees be accessed in accordance with Education Law Section 1343. Such employees shall be placed on a four-year recall from the effective date of this reduction. Sarah Keefe, teacher aide. Kristen Morano, teacher aide. Robin Ralph, cleaner.
Second.
Discussion.
The only thing I'd like to add to this one is the reason that Robin Ralph is on this as an access is because Kristen Morano was a cleaner and will bump back into his previous position as a cleaner.
All in favor? Aye.
Approve...
Why am I forgetting the word now? All in favor, aye. Abstentions? Motion carries. Motion carries.
Because we've been at this for two hours.
Approve accessing of teacher assistant. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, dependent upon abolishment of positions and item, be an I above. Sandra Pittabone would therefore be accessed in accordance with Education Law Section 25103. She shall be placed on the preferred eligibility list in the Teaching Assistant tenure area for a period of seven years from the effective date of this reduction.
Second.
Discussion.
What, what does it mean? Placed on the preferred eligibility list at the Teaching Assistant tenure area? Does it take the tenure away?
Nope. Sandy Pittabona is a Teaching Assistant. We have teachers, Teaching Assistants, so in different title. The law, Education Law Section 2510, states that when we access a Teaching Assistant that, and teacher, actually, so it doesn't matter, that for seven years, we ask them first if, in fact, we're going to bring the position back. And for seven years, she would have the right to deny or take it, until we get back to a full-time position, or whatever position that would be. In an earlier motion, you saw, on the one just before, you saw that same recall of four years. That's because those positions, by law, have a recall or appell of four years. This one has seven.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Approve new course offerings. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, new course offerings be approved as presented.
Second.
She's gonna read them.
Oh, she's gonna read them.
The, they are ECC lifeguarding, ECC Health 101, Psychology AP, Statistics AP, ECC accounting, AgTech Diesel, finishing, Motors, Drive Train, Sports Machines, and Vehicle Maintenance Ownership.
Second.
Discussion.
All I'd like to add on this one is that it was a district goal and a board goal and an initiative of the district to take a look at higher rigor and to also be offering courses that were granting college credit. And as you can see from this list of courses, we are definitely doing both of those. And as you can see from this list of courses, we are definitely doing both of those. Not all these courses will run, though, so there are some in the bottom that are falling with the tech department that we have a teacher coming on as a .34, so not all the technology courses at the bottom can run. But we're hoping to approve them so that when the scheduling process begins again for next year, they are approved as a course so that we are sure that the board would approve those courses for the following year.
If we approve these courses, if you have an influx of kids that want this, does that make a difference if it's going to make it?
Only if the board would approve an increase in the position.
Okay.
We're very excited about this position, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. And we're pulling out...
We're pulling out M. And approve appropriations increase. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2013-2014 appropriations be increased by $2,407.58 to $25,783,357.79 to account for the increased revenues. Note, the district received $2,407.58 from Eden All Sports Boosters for 2013-2014 modified lacrosse.
Second. Discussion?
Well, I see Jack Cuddy in the audience. Would you just stand so people know who you are? Jack, I know that you've carried a number of different positions within the All Sports Boosters, but right now, what position do you carry?
President.
So president of the All Sports Boosters. And what I'd like to say in terms of that is that All Sports you take really seriously and that you look at all the sports to make sure that we're not favoring one over another, and that's really special and really important.
I support us as a board to understand that whether it's bowling, or swimming, or diving, or cheerleading, or whatever it is, that they give the same character benefits to the kids. And so we're passionate about all the sports, continuing the programs and helping the board and the school continue with all the sports, especially for the modified level line. And obviously, the places are challenging for our school district and others, and we're here to help, not to necessarily do the full job, but kind of icing on the cake wherever we can do.
And you've provided a lot of icing, and we're really grateful to you for all and to the entire team that works together.
A lot of people in Eden, as you know, they'll show up at one in the morning to have a sports party, so.
That's right.
Pretty passionate about sports in town.
That's right. Thank you again.
Yes, thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Then we have from the administration and staff.
Ah, waiting patiently for an hour and a half. Mrs....
Over here, sir. You didn't do... You drew it?
She did.
Oh, you drew it? Okay. Sorry, I missed that one.
Oh, that's okay. It probably happened too fast. Mrs. Joanne Rammakers and Kaylee Foal have a short presentation for you regarding FBLA.
Hello, I'm Joanne Rammakers. I've been at Eden School District for about 23 years as a business teacher, and most recently as an affiliate advisor. And here, Jack and I are here to thank the board, Mrs. Anselm and Mr. Servoni, for their help with FBLA and for allowing us to take the students to the state leadership conference this spring. At the state leadership conference, students competed academically in many business-related areas. This year, over 600 students were present at this conference, and I'm proud to tell you that Gretchen Sacks-Later took third place in business presentation. Gretchen Sacks-Later, her presentation was on Obamacare and how it affects small business.
Twelve subjects.
Very challenging. Unfortunately, Gretchen couldn't be here today. She was pulling out to work. But in order to achieve this award, Gretchen competed against 37 teams and qualified to finals. In addition, Kaylee Foal, the president of Eden FBLA and New York State historian, was recognized for outstanding New York State officer.
Congratulations.
Kaylee will be attending the national leadership conference in Nashville this summer. Now, I'd like to introduce you to Kaylee Foal to further discuss FBLA and its mission.
Thank you, Ms. Rammakers. The program that you're about to receive, I've prepared for you, and it contains information on FBLA goals, competitions, conferences, and the state officers. The first page of the program explains the basic organization behind FBLA, and I'll be presenting some of it.
So while she's handing it out, so that I can speak, I just want to let you know that I spoke with a member of our town today who was extremely impressed with your presentation at the chamber last month. And thought you were well-poised and very well-represented representative for FBLA, so you're welcome.
Well, on the first page, Future Presidents in America is a nonprofit, student-run organization designed to teach young adults business and professional leadership. This concept was developed in 1937 by Dr. Handel Portner, and is now the world's largest and charomest student-run business organization. Basically, this FBLA statement, mission statement, is designed for bringing business and education together. And I can say that as a two-term state officer, I have learned a tremendous amount of business, professional leadership, and life skills for this organization. In order to achieve this goal, FBLA hosts many district, state, and national conferences each year. In New York State, the district level hosts two conferences, the Fall District Meeting for workshops and the Spring District Meeting for competition. New York State hosts one huge conference every April that consists of competitions, workshops, campaigning, and other things. This is where I obtained my state vice president for district level position last year and my state historian position this year. There are two major national conferences each year, the National Fall Leaders Conference, which consists of workshops and seminars, and the National Leaders Conference, which is mostly competitions, which is also a... The competitive events award program contains two to three levels depending on the competition. Most competitions have two rounds, a state and national round, where the top three winners from each state advance to nationals. Some events are district elimination, which means the member competing must participate in a district elimination round before competing at states. The top two winners from each of the 15 districts in New York State advance to state competitions and then compete. Members have the option of competing as an individual, team, or as a chapter. Individual events are based solely off the knowledge and the experience of the member. Some events include accounting, business law, client service, public speaking, and proprietary procedure. Members can compete in teams two or three, whether in either producing a product and recycling panel judges, like Gretchen Sacks-Later did, or producing a product and competing in a task together. Some events include emerging business, desktop publishing, and sports marketing. Members can also participate in a chapter event, such as chapter beer, local annual chapter business report, or partnership of business. On page five of the program, the process of becoming a state officer is stated. This process takes a total of seven months, which includes an interview, a written application, obtaining letters of recommendation, an examination, approving a campaign by a state committee, presenting a speech to the New York State affiliate membership, and competing at the state leadership conference. I have completed this process two times in the past three years. The majority of my first years as a state officer consisted of conducting and coordinating my district's two conferences, the Fall and Spring District Meeting. The Fall District Meeting was held here at Eden High School, and was totaled 58 members and five advisors attended. The conference was a five-hour event in which members chose three out of eight workshops to attend. This conference took a total of four months to plan, and the Spring District Meeting held at Oregon Park Bryant Courtyard College, where members participated in most district elimination events. This conference took a total of three weeks to plan. This year, as a mainline state officer, I have held a larger responsibility on the state level and national level. As a New York State historian, I keep records of the year's proceedings and events along with great good recruitment material, conference slideshows, stage design, and most importantly, the state annual business report, which I have here. This 40-page document consists of the year's records and every aspect to membership data to winners in the state leadership conference. Recently, FBLA members consulted with the Eden Chamber of Commerce to start a partnership with the body of business and management. This partnership will allow FBLA members to work collaboratively with them through job shows and internships. An upcoming event that FBLA is assisting with is the Experience Your Future for Your Body in My Career Oriented Day in October. And finally, to thank you, the Eden Board of Education, for supporting this amazing organization. And I can truly say that FBLA saved my life, and I would not be standing in front of you today without it. So, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
So Kaylee, can I just come back? You, Mrs. Rammakers stated it earlier, but I'd like you to state it for us again. You won which award this year? Because it was a big...
The Outstanding New York State Officer Award.
Really cool. Nice job. And you've helped plan this October career fair for us, but you're going to be off in college, so you won't be here to see it, is that right? Yeah, thank you for doing that as well.
I have to present in the workshop.
Oh, good. Beautiful. Great job.
Where are you going to college?
The state university.
Good luck.
And what are you going for?
Psychology.
Thank you very much. Mr. Servoni, here, please.
Eden Board, Superintendent Anselm, Mr. Murphy, Mrs. Thomasall. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce you to the top three students of the class of 2014. We have a couple in the audience I'd like to call up. Laura Harms and A.J. Felton. Laura Harms is our elevatorian. I don't know her exact GPA, but it's like a 99.01, four-five, four years of high school. Laura's going to Ten Pro City College. She's highly involved in the high school. Andrew, A.J. Felton, who I got to know real... He's number two. He's our salutatorian. His average is right up there for Laura's. A.J. and I got to be buddies because he does our morning announcements every day.
What a voice.
Entire year. Has a great voice. The third is Andrew Presonic. Would rather be at Art Park listening to music tonight instead of joining us here. But we're very proud of what they've done over their four years of high school, and we just thought it was really important that the board and everybody gets to meet these outstanding students. One of the neat things we got to do at the end of May was the top three students at Eden Junior Senior High School, along with Mr. Burns and Mrs. Anselm, had to attend the SAR Dinner. The SAR Dinner stands for the Scholastic Achievement Recognition Dinner, sponsored by the Erie and the Edna Superintendents Council. So they celebrate every student from every high school in those counties at a large dinner at...
Salvatore.
Salvatore.
And Barb sits on the board for that.
Barb sits on the board, so it was quite an event. And one of the neat little trophies that they get in recognition of their hard work and commitment over their professional careers is this bice.
Could you show it? Because a lot of people haven't seen it. Would you mind just walking around?
Yeah, Barbara, show it.
You can split up, Laura. Go this way. You can't touch, you can only look.
You don't get finger... Smug, detecting...
That's a crystal bice.
We have to walk up to Mr. Thomasall with tickets. I don't think I had my tickets, and she wouldn't give them to me, even though she knew me. Anyway, we're very proud of them. We're looking forward to their future successes, and we wish them well as they move forward into their post-secondary endeavors.
Congratulations. Ms. Falacaro, you're back again. Busy week.
I'll leave this very short because I feel like I've spoken in pretty much every board meeting, so you've probably heard everything from me and Mr. Graff throughout the week. Once again, it's been another great year for Eden Athletics. I'm still on cloud nine, I think. I haven't come down yet. But just to wrap up in general from fall, winter, and spring, we have 26 of our city teams. Twenty-two of them are in scholar athlete team owners.
Very nice. Good job. And we're going after the other four next year, right?
Yes.
Yes, we have a plan. That's right.
Nine of our city teams won their division. Several of our athletes in individual sports, such as swimming, golf, bowling, track, they won at ECI season. I competed at the sectional level. We had two of those individuals from wrestling and golf qualify for the New York State championship. And we had our two teams, girls volleyball and girls softball, who both won at the regional level, competed at states, and won the coveted New York State championship. And just to remind you how coveted that championship is, Hamberg won their first-ever school New York State championship last year. Eden now has 12 New York State championships. On behalf of Eden Athletics, all my coaches, all my players, and the community, I'd like to thank the board for your continued support. Without the support of you, we will not be that successful. So, thank you. Short, sweet, great.
And I would like to add, even though my section's coming up next, but what I would like to add is that we also, at the high school level, had the senior awards breakfast and the grade 7 through 11 awards, which were both done very well, very professionally. And I heard that the 7th, 11th grade awards was the most humorous. I'm not quite sure where that came from, but I know I saw an email on that today, which was great. The kids dressed up. It was done very well. Thank you very much. David Keen was honored as the senior choice as the teacher of the year, and Olivia Doctor as the grade 7 through 11 teacher of the year. And you can tell it makes... It means a lot to the teachers to be chosen by the students. In addition, do you mind being Vanna White for a moment?
Sure.
I would just like to say that this yearbook is an amazing yearbook. This is a 2014 Embers yearbook. If you haven't seen it, grab one from somebody. You're doing a good job.
I am, please.
It's really, really a great yearbook, and so I'd like to thank the Embers Committee and Sue Wilheim for putting together a really great book. And in addition to that, even though we do not have a full report on Raiders Respond, that will be coming at the choice of the board of July, August, or September. Raiders Respond was an amazing event. We had to postpone it because the first day, I think, was 47 degrees and practically snowing. And so we went on to the second Friday, which wasn't a whole lot warmer, but a little bit sunnier. And the shared decision-making committee, including David Keen and Barb Thomasul, who are here, certainly do an awful lot of work in organizing that, and I can't wait to see the pictures, Barb. So that'll be coming up July, August, or September, when everybody's available for you. Tom, you're up.
Okay. People have been here a long time tonight, so I will try and be brief in my section here. No, I'm not always brief, but we'll move on. Okay. Auctions International, as we talked about, looking at revenues for next year and what we can do to increase our revenues. One of the areas that we wanted to explore was selling access equipment, materials, and the like. So as we look, the board this year accessed buses, as well as some printing equipment. And when we went to Auctions International, which is a site that is used by many school districts in an effort to maximize our revenues for it, have some good news to report. And actually, it's a little bit sooner than we actually expected. We expected the revenues to come next year. They came this year, which makes our balance, it'll look like it's a little bit higher when you hear the totals, so don't be surprised at the end of the year when you hear where we... And it's up 21,220. So...
Which is what you got at the auction?
Which is what we got at the auction. So right now, what we had planned is we planned to auction up 10 pieces of equipment and buses. So eight pieces of buses and then two printers, basically, large printers. The printers, we did not get the bids that we wanted, so we pulled them back because we do have the option, if they don't bid where we want them to, we can always rebid it at another point in time. So we opted to do that. Of the remaining ones, again, 21,220, and that's all for vehicles. In total, we planned as an estimate for everything, including the printers, of 20,500. So we're already ahead of where our estimates are. So so far, it's worked out well. I cannot take the credit for it. Dave Martin really did a lot of the work in terms of looking at Auctions International and coordinating that. So thank you very much. The printers came in at $7.80 and $10. I think we should be able to get more than $10. So our next step for those, quite honestly, is to have a printer who is not associated with in any way, shape, or form, because some of them did bid on the equipment, actually, come in and give us an estimate as to what we think we could reasonably get for them, and then put that back up for bid. And then, secondly, is to talk about the concept for bond refunding. So when we had our capital project at the early part of the 2000s, in paying for the debt, you actually take out bonds for that. So we took out a bond. It was under $2 million, but we took out a bond, and we paid bonds as they mature every year. So different bonds mature at different points in time. And I'm just, in terms... I'm going to make the concept actually very simple. Now with the actual numbers, I'll do the actual numbers at the end.[1771.29] Now, with the actual numbers, I'll do the actual numbers at the end. So, you pay the bonds off through the entire course until they're all matured, and we are expected to go up until 2020, so from 2004 to 2020. And over the course, let's just say we took out a million dollars' worth of bonds. We paid off about half of that right now, so we paid off $500,000 worth of bonds. We actually have capital market advisors who are there on our behalf, looking through all the markets to see if there are better opportunities to lower interest payments. So, they scour the markets to see what's out there. So, what they've found is, and again, I'm just using those simple numbers, if we have $500,000 left right now, if we do nothing else, that's what we'll be paying to retire the rest of the bonds. They've said there's a refunding opportunity where, in essence, what you do, you borrow $500,000. They basically move the money with a new $500,000 to pay off over time the old bonds, and we continue to pay debt as we normally do now, but with a lower interest rate. So, what we end up paying, in essence, isn't 500,000, it's more like 450, along those lines. So, we pay less interest. So, the initial bonds are paid off and retired as they normally come due with the new money that we actually borrow. So, there's no additional monies that we're actually out. So, it's the same amount of money one paying for the other. Now, in terms of looking at where we are at, when we look at the numbers, what we have over the course of the bond years, if we do nothing different now over the course, we will have paid for the debt service $1,785,000. If we do what's called refunding the bond, basically what the process I just described, what we will end up paying over the course is $1,694,000. So, that's basically saying.
One million.
Oh, one million, thank you. $694,000. It's savings of about $93,000. It makes a lot of sense to do. It's something that you don't do all that often, but number one, it's something that the board actually does pass a resolution on. So, it's not expected that it's up for a board vote tonight. That probably would be in August to consider yes or no. If that is something that we do end up doing, the initial packet of information for the bond materials is with our old attorneys. We would need to get that information so we can put that out to market for the official actual bond refunding.
Maybe we could have our present counsel write and make that request?
That's actually a really good idea, because what ends up happening is if you request the materials, you would obviously have to pay for the materials, but we can check to see if our current legal can get it provided gratis. Definitely could try that. Other questions you guys have for me on that?
How much will it cost, do you think, if they don't do it gratis?
No way of knowing until we say, we'll go there out first, see if we can do it free, but then we'll have to ask and say, what is your fee for doing it?
Because the time and if they're going to charge us and the time involved and.
It won't.
Being a firm lawyer.
It won't be close to $93,000, I can tell you that. So, but I mean, I don't know until, we're not even going to answer that question to see if we can get it for free first.
Yeah, I think we're just essentially retrieving a file. We're not asking for their legal advice or anything.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. So.
So, if I could ask the question that I don't know the answer to, because I did sit through any of the audit meetings on this, is this something that you do on this bond refunding every so many years when we have bonds or every year when you see it coming?
It's when market conditions actually allow. Right now, we're at a very good interest rate.
So, did you know that or did someone tell you?
No, capital market advisors who work with us.
They advised us.
They advised us. That is part of their job.
That's lovely. Okay. Good.
Is that for me?
Questions for Tom? He's okay. All right. I'm actually going to read the ETA access and recall of position because our auditors have asked us to put this on the board record. If in fact I go too fast, tell me to slow down. Last year as a budget item, we eliminated an entire 1.0 FTE physical education position. This position was held by Amy Francisco. When the master schedules were finally completed last year in July or early August, we learned that we needed to bring her back to a 0.47 PE position in order to fulfill our needs in all the buildings. As a part-time teacher, Amy's contribution to her health insurance was then prorated by her FTE, which is part of that contract. The ETA contract states that a full-time teacher who is reduced to part-time does not get their contribution prorated. In effect, if they were reduced, we would end up paying the whole piece. Our attorney has advised us that because Amy Francisco's position was abolished and then reinstated between June 30th and September 1, when there was no break in service, because teachers are 10-month employees and do not work in the summer anyways. Had this happened in January or February, she would have been accessed in January, come back in February, there would have been a break in service. Therefore, the district, according to our attorney, will be responsible for reimbursing Amy Francisco for her health insurance as it were not prorated for the 2013-14 school year as if she were a full-time teacher. This is also true in her part-time status, 2014-15, or until she becomes full-time again. Any questions? Thank you for letting me read that. The May 28th district safety drill, if a safety drill can go well, it went really well. All four buildings, including transportation, were involved in the safety drill. It was in the Buffalo News. That was really nice. Thank you, Buffalo News. David is here. He did a great job of putting that into the paper for us. Very well-written. And also, in addition to that, it was in the Penny Saver, it was on our district newsletter, it was in some of our Friday focuses. While I'm not ready to give you the details of what the scenario was in all the buildings, because we do have videos that are happening, what I would say to you is that we did put up a survey afterwards that we had well over 150 respondents to, so thank you, Mrs. Karstedt, for putting that together and getting it up on the website. There were some interesting ideas in that as well. Jeff, I think, probably heard the most because Eric Cooper had his radio on him because he's part of the emergency squad. So, you heard the dispatch for Mercy Flight, and you said it was pretty surreal. So, I look forward to sharing some of the details with you at another time. We are going to continue to do these full campus drills in the future, and Mr. Servoni has already been notified that the lockdown will occur in his building next year, so get ready. That does not mean that it will or won't occur anywhere else, but we just know what buildings we want to target for these type of drills. The Eden Elementary School digital sign installation, which was originally slated for tomorrow, has been moved to 20th. Is it supposed to rain, Dave, or no? Good day?
I don't know.
Don't know either. Do you know what time they're going to be here about?
I'm not reading the forecast right now.
Thank you.
I know that because it's their field date.
Yes.
It now just caused a problem. I thought my voice really.
Because you said it.
I got that.
Because you said it. Do you know what time they'll be here about, Mr. Martin?
I haven't heard a confirmation, but I assume they're going to start this morning because they have to take what's there out and then move the new sign into it, so.
Would you take some pictures for us while they're doing that? And then, at some point, I would love to have members of the board in front of it along with some of our major donors for that, too. This digital sign was completely donated by the community of Eden with the help of the chamber and the Eden Community Foundation. It's about a $17,000 cost, and then our crew with David is putting it in. No trenches need to be buried for it because it's wireless. And then, Mark Graff is working with his crew at the elementary school to figure out how to get the messages changed on it, right? We've promised the community we won't have flashing pink or scrolling, so we won't do that. And along with those same lines is the ability to advertise for emergencies, to be able to advertise for nonprofits. So, this is a really nice sharing of something for Eden and the school. And then, AP, Business First, actually put it out last week in their guide digitally and in print that Eden Central School District is the number-one school for the highest AP scores of all the schools that are listed in Business First in Western New York. So, that's 100 high schools, so congratulations to all the high school students for that. There's about 74 students or so that had the highest scores. So, our goal for next year is to continue to do that and to get more students taking APs with the great scores. So, congratulations to, I guess that one would be Mark. That one belonged to you from the year before, because it was last year. Jeff doesn't get credit on that one.
It was all a job.
And that's all I have.
Future dates, reorganization, and regular board of education meeting will be Wednesday, July 2nd, 2014, at 7:00 p.m.
And then, if I could, please just add to that, at 5:30 to 6:00.
5:40.
5:40 to 6:30 will be the Veteran Tax Exemption Public Forum right here. And then, August 6, you also have a meeting on a board meeting schedule. That'll be the tax rate approval, not on the regular schedule.
It's August 6.
It's a Wednesday.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sent to motion carries.
Great job. Thank you.